Calling tonight's meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, September 15th to order. Please, Mr. Fred Fow, Noblesville resident, would you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fow. He has great attendance for these council meetings, so I bet it was time, right? Speaking of attendance, roll call, Ms. Leece.
Mr. Eyre. Mr. Boyce.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, approval of amendments for the August 25th budget meeting. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. An approval of the minutes for August 25th, 2020. Approved?
Second.
Motion and a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Approval of tonight's agenda. Move to approve?
Second.
Again, a motion and a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda. You? Petitions or comments by citizens? I have none at this point. There is a form just outside the doors. If you're interested, please fill it out and give it to the clerk, Ms. Leece. And council committee reports. I think, I know we start with Park Board. Are we good with that, Mr. Smith?
Absolutely. Parks Board met on September 2nd. It was a quick meeting. We talked about a few updates and a little bit of new business. As far as the updates go, the deck repair to the bridge over Cisarara Creek is underway, as well as the planning for the ice rink around Christmas Lane. The golf director also gave an update from his perspective. City revenue for August was over $200,000 and year-over-year, we're up $70,000 this time from last year. So golf has been, this year is doing well. And as far as new business goes, the board also approved the contract to bid out the irrigation project and contract for Golf Design Group for Bunkers.
Any other council reports other than finance? Is finance the next one? Is that Mr. O'Connor this time for finance?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met September 10th. I'll keep this somewhat abbreviated because a number of the things that are on the agenda this evening were heard in the Finance Committee. The first thing was the development agreement that is on the agenda as miscellaneous number one, which is related to the Nexus of Noblesville project. This comes to you with favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. We had a rather lengthy conversation about it. Went through the development agreement. I think there may be a change that is coming forth from Ms. Reed, although I don't think it's of any substance, but it's a substantial project, obviously, on the West Side, on the Marsh supermarket site. I won't go into much of the detail here because Ms. Reed is going to do that this evening. So we spoke about the Oleo Road Bonds. As you recall, we approved the issuance of these bonds for the Oleo Road Improvement Project. I believe the interest rate when these were bid came back at 1.83%. So the city's bond rating continues to shine in the capital market. So good for the taxpayers, reduces our costs, and helps us do more projects. So we talked about the high AV levy growth appeal, which Mr. Spalding will probably mention in his budget discussion. This is something we're able to do, just given the growth of the city and the growth and the assessed valuation to provide services for the community, so I won't get into too much of that. The budget, we discussed. Again, these are all coming to you with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee, and Mr. Spalding will go into that. That is, I think, the second item on our agenda. We had some conversation about the one-year capital projects that we funded this year with the one-year bond and trying to come to grips with which projects were going to be prioritized. I think that we've, the administration's come to some conclusions on which ones that they want to fund. But given our bond rating and our capability to provide the funding via the mechanism we put in place, I think we're in good shape to do that. Ms. Ramon was in the meeting for the 21 salary ordinance, which is, I believe, also on the agenda this evening. So we'll hear from her. I think there's a transfer on the agenda here for the downtown streetscape, and Mr. Bears will opine on that as well. The claims were reviewed and come to you with a favorable recommendation. And I think that was really the highlights of the meeting. So most of which, most of what we talked about, we'll all talk about again here this evening. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. New ordinances for discussion, number 24-09-20. Council to consider ordinance number 24-09-20 and ordinance annexing 15811 Bowden Road and resolution RC-35-20, adopting a fiscal plan. Ms. Yelton.
Please introduce.
Sorry. Now, Ms. Yelton.
Thank you. The honor before you is, again, a 40-acre parcel of property that is basically located north of 156th Street and west of Bowden Road. Currently existing on this property is a residential house along with a couple accessory buildings. This property is basically being proposed to be developed as an elementary school for Hamilton Southeastern School District. Surrounding uses include mostly residential. There are vacant parcels, and it is adjacent to the city limits on the south side, the east side, as well as the north side. The fiscal plan was attached to the resolution. And with that, I will ask if you have any particular questions. You will typically act on the resolution this evening, and then the ordinance will be back before the council at your next meeting.
Any questions of Ms. Yelton? Is there more discussion here from anyone else, or is it you? No? Okay.
Guess not.
Guess not? That's fine. I am then opening the public hearing for the annexation of 15811 Bowden Road.
Mr. President.
Ms. Boyce.
Seeing no one approach, I would make move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor. Now, we need a motion on the resolution. Remember, the ordinance will move forward for two weeks from now, but this is a, we need a motion for the resolution.
President, I'd make a motion to approve resolution RC-35-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-35-20. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Yelton. Next up, number 25-09-20. Council to consider ordinance number 25-09-20 and ordinance adopting the 2021 operating budget.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, Controller. And let's see, we've tested this thing out plenty of times. And now it's, oh, that's what I needed to do. Thank you.
Now, we're not seeing anything on these monitors, but what you gave us will, oh, you're saying, hold on, Mr. Hampton. Okay. I'm impatient. I'm sorry.
I'm going to close it again. There we go. Let's see. Here we go. All right, yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller. And my purpose with you this evening is to give you an overview of the introduced budget for 2021. Again, as reference, this is a, this is a two-step process as well. So tonight is just the introduction review, and as Mr. O'Connor had mentioned, you know, we've had some review at the Finance Committee prior to this discussion tonight. So the first thing that I thought I'd mention is just a reference to the mayor's overall guiding principles for the budget that we're presenting tonight. And if you'll recall at some of our earlier meetings, you know, the mayor, you know, mentioned these things directly. One is no overall increase compared to the 2020 revised budget. No health insurance premium increase for employees. Hand-in-hand with that, no general salary increase across the board for employees. And then no new positions except for the implementation of the Noble Act Community Paramedicine Program. So those were important guidelines that were provided by the mayor to both my office and the city departments as they worked on the budget. And then what that allows us to do is to accomplish certain goals. One is maintain the $10 tax rate target that we've committed to over the last couple of years with no increase for operations. Also, maintain significant cash reserves to cushion the blow against potential coming revenue impacts from the economic slowdown associated with COVID-19. And to maximize amounts available for capital investments in the community, which are always important to both council members and the Noblesville residents. Couple things to be aware of before we go into kind of the details of the budget is there are some important new features with this budget. For those of you that have been on the council for a few years, you know, really since 2018, I've been kind of iteratively making improvements and additions to the budgeting process. And kind of the most significant thing this year is the introduction of five-year capital budget that gets integrated into this annual civil-city budget that we'll be discussing. You'll eventually be adopting. And what is important to understand about the capital budget is there's both money that's appropriated in the budget for it, and there's money that comes from other sources that are not part of the council appropriation process. And we talk about that. And also, just to be aware of, we've introduced this year project numbers as part of our accounting system to help us track project costs. Another big change with this budget is including a budget that's, a fund that's called the Parks Program Fund and its budget. That is something that has existed within the city of Noblesville, but we're now integrating it into the annual budget process. And it's from that fund that we operate the golf operations and the parks programs, the, you know, camps and other recreational and cultural activities that Parks puts on and, you know, citizens can participate in. And then the last thing that's new, it's relatively minor, is expanded use of dedicated funds. Without getting into all of the details here, there are just a number of restrictions and limits on certain types of funds, and we've just become more aggressive at trying to identify certain dedicated restricted-use funds that we can tap more effectively to help support the cost of city and reduce our dependence on the general or unrestricted funds. Then two slides that are kind of important context here because these are the documents that the public sees when a municipality has to provide its information through Indiana's Gateway Site to notice the public on, you know, what it's doing with this budget. So this first slide is actually the public notice that went out into Gateway. And what it does is it lists all of the budgeted funds that are included in this budget, as well as the estimate of the property tax levy. And then it has a, you know, another column on there for excess levy appeals, and then a comparison to the current tax levy amounts. The important things to understand about this are because of some of the nuances with municipal finance law, basically what communities have to do, and we're no different, is when you put out the public notice of your budget, you have to do so in a tactically thoughtful way so that you have the flexibility to be able to adopt a budget that really represents the funding of the operational needs of the community. And so this budget sets upper limits. But what we actually plan to do and the numbers that we present tonight will not, you know, rise to these total amounts that are represented on here. The two things that are most significant with the notice are the levy amount, which we'll talk about a little bit more in a second, and then the budget estimate. And the budget estimate, the total here, the $82.3 million total, does not exactly match the budget numbers that we'll present when we get into the budget presentation. And that is mostly a function of a technical difference on when you present your budget. In the DLGF website, you have to present it in one way, which requires you to double-count a few expenses. And the numbers that you'll see in the following budget presentation really represent the spending plan that we have. The next item is very similar. This is a portion of the document that you have in front of you, which is from the budget ordinance that you will ultimately adopt. We're not taking action on this tonight. But this is also generated by the Gateway System. And again, two items on here to draw your attention to is this tax levy. You'll ultimately adopt a tax levy that is represented on this sheet. But the actual amount of property taxes that we anticipate to raise from this budget is not 45.2 million. It's actually 34.6 million. That factors in a number of things, including the property tax caps and the loss, the revenue loss associated with that. Then the other thing that's represented on this document, you see a total tax rate of $1.32. And we've talked about this $1.10 tax rate. Again, this is part of the tactical approach that we take when we present the budget, that you ensure that you will be able to, you know, levy the proper amount for each fund. And to do that, you have to make sure there are certain unknown things that happen between now and the end of the year when you actually have your budget order issued by the Department of Local Government Finance. But to address that matter, there will be a resolution that will be presented to you at the next council meeting that basically restricts us to a $1.10 tax rate and basically directs me as the Controller when I'm submitting the final tax rates to the DLGF for each fund that they can't total to more than $1.10. So the $1.32 does not reflect the plan. It represents kind of the approach you need to take so that you have some ability to adjust for uncertainties between now and the end of the year. I guess I will mention one other thing about this. One of the big things that is an uncertainty, because it's another item on the agenda later, is part of the budget that you will see here includes a excess levy appeal, a high-growth levy appeal for the city, which represents about $680,000 that is included in our projected revenues and in our budgeted funds. We actually won't know the answer to that appeal request until after the budget's adopted, probably sometime in November. That's when, November, early December, that's when it happened last year. We did a similar thing with last year's budget. And so that kind of explains one of the reasons why you have to advertise a higher property tax levy here, is that you have to is that you have to advertise the levy as if you get the levy appeal. And if you don't get the levy appeal, then you make some other adjustments to other funds so that you can still meet your $110 tax rate target. And like I said, without getting into the details, that kind of gives you a general explanation of why those numbers don't match exactly what you'll see in the budget presentation. And with that, I am going to relinquish the microphone to Sam Barris, our Budget Finance Analyst, who really functions as the city's Budget Director. And he played a key role in both working with the departments in preparing the budget and putting this presentation together. And I'll have Sam take it from here and kind of walk you through the, the budget that is being put before you.
Thank you. Sam Barris, OFA staff for the record. So this PowerPoint is somewhat lengthy, so I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. Feel free to cut me off if you think I'm going too fast or if any questions come up as I go. So what we have here on Slide six is we have some kind of high-level information about the budget. Obviously, the pandemic and the economic uncertainty around it has shaped a lot of what's in the, the budget that, that is being introduced tonight. The city does have a growing tax base. It does have cash reserves that are extremely strong and will help offset the economic and revenue impacts of the pandemic. But we still have to factor in those uncertainties as we move forward. Speaking of those cash balances, the combined rainy day and general fund balances, which is kind of our core reserves, are projected to decline in 2021 by about $1 million. This is largely due to aforementioned revenue impacts of the pandemic. However, if you look at all of our max levy funds, so that doesn't just include the general fund, it also includes the MVH Fund, the Park Fund, and the Fire Cumulative Capital Fund. Those cash balances are only projected to decline by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So the impact is, is less if you look at all those funds combined. And all that said, we're, we still think that at the end of 2021, we'll have general fund and rainy day fund balances of about 60% of what our revenues for, for that, those funds will be. So again, those are strong and will help as we move forward and, and deal with the pandemic, post-pandemic world. Regarding expenditures, the introduced budget is 0.8% above the 2020 revised budget, excluding debt service changes and pension fund changes. And it's 0.4% above the base budget. I've explained and discussed on numerous occasions what kind of what goes into the base budget. If anyone has any questions about that, happy to answer or follow up individually if you prefer that way. Of that increase over the 2020 budget, though, we have an increase in what we're paying for the Levinson Garage debt service payment of a little over half a million dollars. Why is it going up? Well, in 2020, we only made half a year worth of monthly payments versus next year, we're going to pay a full year of monthly payments. So that 0.8% increase over the 2020 budget is entirely explained by that increase in the Levinson Garage bond payment. So if you factor that out, we're, we come in just below the 2020 revised budget. This next slide kind of shows this in tabular form, so I'm not going to go through this number by number. What this also includes, though, this middle column includes debt service funds and pension funds. So the increases you see from 2020 budget and from the base budget are higher. That's mainly going to be a function of the one-year bond Jeff mentioned. So last year, our one-year bond was about $3 million. And in 2021, we're estimating it's going to be about $4.8 million. So that increase is driving a lot of what you're seeing here on this page. Moving on to the next slide, this breaks out that increase. Again, this is going to be relative to the base budget, relative to the '21 base budget. And it breaks, this slide breaks it out by expense series. So a few major things to note. Four new public safety positions in line with the mayor's guiding principles for this budget are included and are represent a chunk of this increase. Offsetting that, we have decreases for what we're appropriating for contingency, a little under $400,000. That's in line with what you have seen in prior budgets as we've gotten more accurate with our budgeting and really evaluated departments' needs and, and honed those in. We've reduced our contingency appropriations because the ideas were more accurate, so we don't need to sock money away for just-in-case scenarios. And then the $4.8 million for the one-year bond is not included in the base budget. So anytime you see a comparison with the base budget, you're going to see this number that's like $5 million. Most of that is just because the one-year bond isn't a base item. It's for new capital expenditures. But it is necessary if we want to maintain our commitment to the $110 tax rate. Table here, again, kind of went over this when I talked about fund balances. Just breaks out how our cash balances are projected to change in 2021 in a couple different layers. Over on the right, you can see for our max levy funds, that is, the funds which get revenue from our max property tax levy, those funds are projected to decline by $233,000. There's differences if you look at specific breakdowns of the funds, you can see these on the table. Let me know if you have any questions or we can follow up with you later as well. So from here on out, we're going to go through a series of these charts. And really, the purpose of this is to show different cuts of the budget so everyone can have a good understanding of how different portions of the budget are restricted for certain uses. We think it's helpful to keep that in mind because the $81.3 million budget really isn't for any possible use. There's sections of that that can only be used for certain things. So what this chart shows is that of the 81 million, 60% is for unrestricted purposes. So that's pretty much the general fund. And then you have 21% that's for restricted operating expenditures. So think like the MVH Fund or the Park Fund that have some sort of statutory constraint on what you're allowed to spend the money on. You have about 5% for restricted capital, so it's even more restricted. It's like the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, for instance. You have 13% that's for debt service, property tax-funded debt service funds, and then a small portion for pre-1977 police and fire pensions. This has been the same view, but in dollar terms instead of percent terms. And you can see the comparison from the base to the introduced budget. Again, big increases due to the one-year bond, and it's in the debt service category. The other changes are fairly small comparatively. Different comparison between the base budget and the introduced budget, this time breaking everything down by department. So you can see, and these are all in millions, the amount being budgeted for each department. And the difference between the base and the introduced is probably more easily visualized here. I've said it a couple times, one more time, biggest difference is the one-year bond. And we've allocated where we think we'll charge that debt service payment out to departments based on the current plan for how those proceeds will be utilized in the capital budget. So the biggest increase would appear to be for street improvement and rehabilitation. That's just because most of the one-year bond right now is slated to be used for street projects. There's some small increases for police and fire. And then some departments are actually below the base, and you can see those at the bottom. So some various miscellaneous departments are budgeted below the base amount. Again, this is all civil city funds broken down by department, just to give a sense of where the money goes on a departmental basis. So you can see about 44% is for police and fire. You have another approximately 20% that's for street, both cost of maintaining our streets, administering our street department, and new street investments. About 10% that's for various park expenditures, six for planning and economic development. And then the rest is for a whole variety of departments that serve a variety of administrative functions throughout the city. This is that same breakdown, but by what we're spending the money on. So of all of our budgeted funds, we're spending 57.5% on personal service costs. That's salaries, benefits, et cetera. The runner-up category would be the 300 series, which is a whole variety of things. Our contracts, debt service payments, capital equipment leases, other charges that are kind of miscellaneous. And then supplies and capital outlays are a much smaller sliver of the overall budget. This next view is just showing you what we're spending our unrestricted funds on. So basically, our general fund, this also includes the Coet Debt Syncing Fund, which is the general fund and all but name only. It's a portion of the general fund that we've siphoned off to pay for the Levinson Garage bond payment. You can see that if you're just looking at the general fund, police and fire makes up a much bigger portion of our overall budget, about two-thirds, in fact. And the rest is going to economic development and planning and executive functions and as well as things like maintenance costs and stuff like that. Again, this is just the general fund. And if you look at it this way, a huge portion of our, our general fund expenditures are going for personal service costs, much bigger than when you're looking at the all-funds version of the budget. Restricted operating funds, the big ones here, again, MVH, Park Fund, Park Program Fees Fund, local road and street funds. So you're seeing street represented significantly here with over half of this amount. Parks is the other big one. In this case, much less of the cost of our restricted operating funds are for personal services. We use some of these funds to pay for some pretty significant capital expenditures, like the MVH Fund, for example, funds our street resurfacing program, which would be paid out of the, the 400 series mostly. Restricted capital funds, what we mainly use these for are our capital equipment leases, fleet vehicle leases, et cetera. So you're going to see a list of the departments that have lots of equipment that they need and fleets that they need to maintain. So you see public safety, street department, and then to a lesser extent, parks and IT. Our restricted capital funds, you might say they're capital funds, so why is it mostly not capital outlay? Well, again, it's because we do a lot of these things through equipment leases, which we charge the 300 series. So that's why it shows up the way it does. And then finally, you have our debt service funds. These are property tax funded, so they have their own tax rate that generate revenue specifically for that debt service payment. We allocate those debt service payments out to the department that best aligns with whatever we issued the bonds for. So you can kind of see that most of our debt service is due to street-related projects. And smaller chunks are related to park projects, fire station. The maintenance stuff is for renovations to City Hall. Maybe not a perfect place to allocate that to, but for lack of anything that fits better, that's where it's allocated to. And then to a smaller extent, economic development. So with that, just a couple of comments on capital budgeting. Jeff mentioned at the top, our capital planning has come a long way in a couple of years. This budget includes $8.9 million from council appropriated sources for major capital projects. So the bulk of that is from the one-year bond, $4.6 million estimated of proceeds. I've said a $4.8 million number in other places. The 4.8 is the projected debt service and issuance costs. The 4.6 is what we'd actually get from the bond and have to spend on projects. And then the other big one here is the MVH Fund, which, as I said, we use for street resurfacing, which is a major capital expense every year. Beyond the, the money that council is appropriating, there's additional money, about $8.5 million, that's from other sources like state grants, federal grants, TIF funds, stuff like that that council isn't appropriating. But nevertheless, we're still trying to make an effort to track what we're actually allocating these projects in each year. And so you can see the same list of projects that council is approving money for. There's also additional money that brings the total allocated to those projects to 17 million. That's what that middle column shows. This list is, is preliminary. Obviously, plans sometimes change in regards to the timelines on these capital projects. But this is currently how the budget envisions allocating those resources at this time. And so with that, I'm actually going to hand it back to Jeff for a few more slides, and he can finish this up.
Thanks, Sam. Nice job. So also, I just wanted to share with you a couple other notable items that are kind of important in encompassing the whole budget. And these were, again, talked about with the Finance Committee, but just general concepts that are important for council members to understand. We talked about general pay increase, and that's one notable item. There is no general pay increase. In past years, we would show here's how much was in the budget for the general pay increase. Next two items are, when we talked about all the various, you know, debt service funds, you know, Sam mentioned this amount, the property tax levy debt service funds. There, there are also other debt and lease payments that are paid for out of the budget that, that you'll see here, that you saw, and that we talked about, about $4.5 million. And that represents, to a large extent, the various capital equipment leases that we do, as well as the debt on the Levinson Garage. And the important thing to understand about that, as you're looking at the budget, thinking about the budget, is that the, the money that's listed in the debt lease payments from operational revenue sources, that in theory is money that, it, it's easiest to think about that like debt you would think about in your normal personal life. That is, revenue that you have coming in regardless of what you use it for. And we've made decisions to use it for paying debt service to, you know, fund either equipment purchases or a major capital project. The property tax debt service levy amounts are, are different, and it's really a function of municipal finance law. Those are things where we have specifically said, we're going to undertake a project, establish a property tax levy specifically to pay off that bond. And when the project goes away, the, the revenue goes away. So they're, they're, they're linked to one another. They don't represent that type of thing where you could say, hey, I could, I could, hey, let me just not do this and just take that money and reallocate it to something else. You would actually, you know, again, a property tax levy debt goes away, that revenue goes away. And the council would have to take a separate, specific action to do another bond issue from a property tax levy. And you do those kinds of things all the time. But it's important to understand that distinction. You don't, you don't have really any choices with, with that revenue. Then the last slide is, this is, this has become important. It will probably go, it will probably drop in importance in future years. But again, for those of you that have been on the council for the, for an extended period of time, one of the things that's been changing year after year is the use of contingency. And as Sam mentioned, we've really started to hone in on making the departmental budgets really kind of fully represent needs operationally, capital, from a capital perspective. And as you budget, you know, more precisely and effectively at the department level, your need for contingency budgeting goes away. It never goes away completely because there's always, you know, known unknowns and, you know, unexpected things that come up. And so you always want to rationally budget some for contingency. But, you know, three or four years ago, you know, the, the budget for contingency was, you know, up around $10 million, and I've continued to hone it down. So, you know, now it's $1.3 million. And also, what you'll notice in here is one of the amounts in contingency also represents a, you know, change in budgeting approach that we think is important. And that is the personal services contingency amount. What had happened, what we had done previously was all positions were funded in departmental budgets at their full authorized salary ordinance amount. And now what we've said is we're going to budget those at the actual amount that the, the folks are being paid. And then for consistency's sake, we went ahead and took that difference and put it in contingency so that you do have an apples-to-apples comparison from previous years to the current year. And so if during the year, some issues were to come up or what have you, there would be that contingency that you could, you could tap. But the idea was really to zero in and have the department budgets really represent their planned spending as opposed to having that contingency in the departmental budgets. And with that, that's the end of our 2021 Introduce Budget Overview. I'm happy to take any questions now. And of course, you all know my number and my email address. And I'm sure people think of questions later, and you can certainly send them on to Sam or myself. And we'll handle them the best way we can. Any other questions?
Any questions at this point? I know we've been through this. Mr. O'Connor?
I don't have a question as much as I just wanted to commend Jeff and Sam and his team, the administration. I know we've all spent quite a bit of time in meetings going through all these numbers. And in probably a 15- or 20-minute window, you've summarized a good five or six months' worth of work. But a lot of effort has gone into trying to follow the mayor's directives and at the same time, making sure that we're providing for projects that need to be done across the city, streets, infrastructure improvements, et cetera. So I just wanted to take a minute and thank Jeff and, and Sam and the team and OFA and the administration and the department heads. Frankly, they get to do a lot of work now on these budgets that I think is a good thing because they're the ones that actually have to execute based on the amounts that we appropriate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
We'll see you in two weeks, I think.
And we've enjoyed working with you and the Finance Committee on all this, too. Thanks.
Questions or comments at this point? Like Mr. O'Connor said, we will see it again here in two weeks. And we have ample opportunity. here in two weeks, and we have ample opportunity if there are other questions that pop up in one's minds that I can. Thank you again. Great work on that. We'll get back on, we do need to open a public hearing for the operating, 2021 operating budget. Consider it open.
Mr. President?
Voice.
Seeing no member of the public coming forward for the public hearing for the 2021 operating budget, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving to number 2609-20, the council will consider ordinance number 2609-20, a salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the City of Noblesville for 2021.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Ms. Ramon.
Good evening. Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. On the attached letter outlines the requested changes to the 2021 salary ordinance, and then highlighted on this ordinance are the changes. Each of these requests were discussed during your department budget sessions, except for one exception on page one, a request for a simple title change from Operations Manager to Executive Operations Manager. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Ramon? Okay, consider it introduced. We'll see you in a couple of weeks on this one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Number 2709-20, council to consider ordinance number 2709-20, a salary ordinance for elected officials for the City of Noblesville.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Houston, second, and Ms. Lees.
The salary ordinance for elected officials, in keeping with the mayor's directive of no employee salary increases, the amounts have remained the same. There are a few tweaks to wording from last year's ordinance that were recommended by Mr. Spalding, but there's no change to the substance of the ordinance.
Questions or comments? Okay, it's been introduced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, number 30-09-20, council to consider ordinance number 30-09-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 24-0619, changes to the civilian employee personnel handbook. Ms. Ramon again.
Hello again.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Now, Ms. Ramon.
Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. The attached letter outlines the requested revisions to the handbook, and the changes throughout the handbook are highlighted, underlined, and bolded. Many of these changes are to provide clarification on our current employment policies and/or to comply with federal or state employment laws. There are a few new sections in the handbook, which include but are not limited to a social media policy. The changes in the handbook have been reviewed and approved by legal counsel, and were also approved this morning at our Board of Works meeting. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and appreciate your consideration.
Questions for Ms. Ramon on the handbook?
Request anything else?
You want to pass this on? As the Human Resources Liaison, Ms. Ramon was good enough to share all of these with me. We probably took half an hour or more and went through all these, but she had asked that we look and consider passing this on first reading. I would make a motion to do that, but I just, I guess, in full disclosure, we've had a fairly lengthy conversation about the changes that are proposed. So I would make a motion that we pass ordinance 30-09-20, ordinance amending ordinance 24-06-19.
We have to have a motion to waive the rules first.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And to pass the ordinance on first reading.
Okay, so this is a motion to waive the rules and approve the ordinance on the first reading. And this is for just to waive the rules. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It passes. Now.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 3009-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 30-09-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Epstein.
That is eight aye, one abstention. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lees, and thank you, Ms. Ramon. Thank you. Moving to item 310920, council to consider ordinance number 31-09-20, an ordinance for special consideration for a vehicle service facility, Bell Tire, within the Terry Lee Crossing Plan Development north of TLC Way and east of State Road 37.
Motion introduced.
Sorry. And a second. We have a motion and a second to introduce Ms. Yelton.
Good evening again. The item before you again is for a special consideration for the construction of a Bell Tire store at the location of TLC Way and Terry Lee Crossing. It is a part of the overall Terry Lee Crossing Plan Development. To the south of it is the Calo Jeep Chrysler Dodge dealership. Obviously, to the north of it, we have an inline store as well as the Terry Lee Hyundai sales area. The special consideration is a use that goes before the Plan Commission and the council. It's for those unique type of uses that may require some additional scrutiny by either the Plan Commission and the council. It is for, again, an automobile service use. The underlying zoning for this project is PBPD, which is a planned business plan development, which would include multiple types of commercial uses. The Bell Tire store will basically look very similar to this. It was the same store that we recently approved for the Saxony corporate campus area that's located off of the interstate there. This is, again, a proposed site plan of their building, and we have also a landscaping plan for the area. The garage doors for this particular facility, the overhead doors, will actually face south. And as you can see, there is basically landscaping in these two areas. They will have one ingress egress to this site, which will be off of TLC Boulevard. Although this property does front adjacent to State Road 37, it does not have direct access to State Road 37. This is basically another view of all four sides of the building. Again, it is a brick building, mostly a brick building. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions. The Plan Commission did send this to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption, nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Yelton? Is the presenter here? Do they want to?
Oh, yes, he is.
He is here. Please just state your name and address, please.
John Nurse Wiki, 136 Potomac Court, with Wolpert. We're the civil engineer on the project. As Joyceanne mentioned, we were here back in January for a location in Saxony, so I'll be brief. The market is dictating a second one here off of 37, and so they're excited to grow that footprint. If you guys have any questions regarding the brand or anything from last time, I'm happy to entertain.
Ms. Wiles? I just have a question. Joyceanne, I think you said that a majority of the overhead doors will be facing south, correct? So as you're heading north on 37, you'll see that?
There will be some landscape screening, but you will, there's potential to see them, correct?
Yes. I mean, there is potential to see them in this area, but again, you know, we do have landscaping here. You know, please keep in mind that when the landscaping is initially installed, it's not going to hide anything.
I could also add that on the east side of the building there is where the deliveries will come in for any of the tires. So that's primarily where most of the loading and unloading happens.
Quick question, Mr. President. What's depicted in the rendering, those are glass doors that face south? Or the bottom panel's solid, but the rest of them are glass?
Correct.
It's a little hard to tell in the rendering.
Correct, yeah. They are glass doors, and the front entrance is all glass as well. I don't know if you've seen any of the other locations around town, but it's a nice look. It's all masonry and then glass at the, kind of the service area in the center.
What's typically out in front of the store, like the part that's going to be on 37? Is that just going to be parking that's out there, or is there tire displays, or what's that?
There's no outdoor storage. They do no outdoor storage. So it will be basically car parking adjacent to 37, and then the main storefront. So it'll be the glass entry and then just sidewalk and ADA accessibility. So, yeah, essentially, the one on the top right there is what you'll see. It's a lot of glass.
And all the inventories inside and racks.
Correct. Correct. It's all stored away in the, where the storage bases are, there's a mezzanine where they do elevated racking.
I just noticed, too, on the plan, that you don't have a pond. It looks like it's underground storage.
Correct. There is some floodway mitigation to us on the east, and then there's the regulated drain to the north. This was not a part of the master planned detention that was provided with the Terry Lee Crossing Plan Development. So if you look in the very southeast corner of that plan, you can see our underground chambers.
Other questions? Okay, so, see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to number 32-09-20, council to consider ordinance number 32-09-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from A2 county zoning to R1 single-family residential for 40 acres north of 156th Street and west of Bowden Road.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Ms. Yelton.
I might ask if you'd like to also introduce the next ordinance, because they do go hand in hand.
We can do that, Ms. Lees. Always check with her. Number 33-09-20, council to consider ordinance number 33-09-20, an ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 single-family residential to R1 G U O, government use overlay for the construction of an elementary school for Hamilton Southeastern School District on 40 acres north of 156th Street and west of Bowden Road.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this item is, basically, was introduced with the annexation. It is the same 40-acre site, and again, a proposed school for Hamilton Southeastern School is, for the school district, is being proposed for this. Again, this item was before the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on it. They are asking for, basically, an R1 underlying zoning with a government use overlay. Typically, for all schools and government uses, we do a government use overlay. And it is a type of plan development, so at this time, you get to see what the school's going to look like, what their site plan is, and basically, that is what they need to build to. With the application, again, as you can see, some of our surrounding zoning in the area is basically, we've got R5 directly across the street, Bowden Road, this being Deer Path. It is a multi-zoning of, there's R2, there's R3, there's R4 in Deer Path, as well as R5. We do, this adjacent piece of property here is currently not in our city limits. However, later on in the year, in the next month or so, I do have an annexation petition coming forward on this piece of property, so it, again, will be inside our city limits. And then to the north of it is basically an R1 PD there also. Again, they are proposing an elementary school. I have, basically, little different photographs to show you as far as what the school will look like. As you can see, there is basically a lot of masonry product on the school building, as well as, let's see if I can't zoom in here a little bit better. There is a lot of masonry product on the building, as well as horizontal rib siding, and then they have smooth ACM panels. Bowden Road, based on our thoroughfare plan, is a primary arterial. 156th Street is classified as a secondary arterial. During the public hearing process, there were several waivers requested. Most of those waivers had to do with landscaping. These are the same waivers that we have granted to the Noblesville School System in regards to building-based landscaping. There are some variances from parking, parking lot landscaping, as well as tree plantings for the perimeter. They have provided an overall site plan, again, that does show additional plantings. There will be plantings in the parking lot. I'm trying to find how to decent site plan here that evidently has gotten mixed up in all my papers. So basically, there will be landscaping, basically, along 156th Street here. There will be landscaping along Bowden Road. They do have landscaping in the parking lot. It will be limited to trees in the parking islands as opposed to shrubs. Again, we are not proposing any shrubs, basically, and trees adjacent to the building. Again, this is for safety reasons. This is another look at the overall building, kind of giving you a look at it from all This is their proposed main entrance sign. The other item that I will talk about, going back to the serial photograph, is that there will be no entrance or ingress egress off of Bowden Road. There will be two entrances off of 156th Street. That is due to queuing on-site. I will note that there have been a traffic study provided to our engineering department, and the engineering department reviewed it for access management, as well as queuing of vehicles, and basically, their overall traffic impact study. The queuing of vehicles for this drop-off site basically are below what is provided on-site for queuing. So the engineering department basically is on board with what they provided as far as their traffic impact study and their queuing and access to the site. When they actually come back for a building- When they actually come back for a building permit or prior to a building permit, they will have to provide us with a secondary plat. And that plat will have a non-access easement that will be along Bowden Road there. The Plan Commission did send this to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption. The zoning came to you with a nine in favor and a zero opposed. The PD overlay came to you with an eight in favor and a one opposed. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff? And if not, there is a, at least one presenter in the audience representing this application.
Questions? Mr. Air.
Ms. Yelton, based on the site plan that I was provided, which is very well, I guess my big concern is the queuing, the drop-off and pickup. It's been a problem in the past with our Noblesville Schools. And it's become a much worse problem this year because of the COVID situation. We're seeing cars stacked up all the way down Monument and even out to the roundabout on Cumberland. Does this site provide enough drop-off, pick-up interior to it that they won't be backing up on to 156th Street?
Based on the traffic study that was presented to engineering, there is queuing on-site for 110 spaces. And the queuing data that was analyzed, basically on similar buildings that the Hamilton Southeastern School has, provides for 48 and 78 vehicles. So we have, you know, in one case, almost double or more than double what is needed as far as queuing.
How many students will this building hold?
How many students? I don't know. 720.
Is your elementary in HSE, is it K through 5?
Why do we have him come? If you don't want him to come up and... I hate to have you come all the way over here and not get up and speak.
So, Mr. President, before Mr. Day comes up, I just want to remind the council members as well as those people who are in the audience or watching us online, that the Hamilton Southeastern School District actually starts at Summer Road. So some people may be wondering why is the Noblesville City Council taking a look at HSE school decisions? So the school district lines do kind of cross over. So as you look at Ms. Yelton's arrow photography, anything that is east of Summer Road are HSE students. But it is Noblesville city limits.
Please just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is David Day. I live at 19860 Creek Road in Noblesville, Indiana. I am the managing partner of Church Churchill and Antrim. We are general counsel to the Hamilton Southeastern Schools. And I forget the question.
What is the, what's the age range for a...
K-4.
K through 5?
K through 4.
4, okay.
In Hamilton Southeastern, it's a K-4 system, then a 5, 6 intermediate school, 7, 8 juvenile high school, and a 9, 12 high school.
I'm not sure you can answer this, but do they anticipate a lot of the traffic coming from Oleo Road on 156th Street? I would imagine just based on where they're coming from, but I don't know. Coming if they're HSE students.
They can be coming from Summer Road.
There's quite a bit of housing along Summer. There's quite a bit of housing between Summer and Bowden. I think that's probably the bulk of the housing. The, if you go east of Bowden Road, it tends not to be developed in housing at all.
Deer Path probably has 1,000 homes in it.
Yes, yeah.
Because my question, the concern is the 156th Street and Bowden Road intersection. And others, I'm not sure that's what's going on there. If that's, I know we've talked in many other presentations that that's potentially a roundabout.
Right, that was, that was the indication at the Plan Commission meeting.
And in Roads Committee, that hasn't been discussed, that there's going to be a whole study of Bowden Road in these intersections at 156 as well as 166.
And I believe the site plan contemplates the roundabout coming, yes.
Any other questions or, yeah, Mr. Air.
Did the school do a study? Will that, this elementary predominantly service that quadrant, that Deer Path, the, all the development? I'm guessing there's close to 2,000 homes within two miles of that.
I think when the school opens, the concept is it will serve a lot of the students in Wayne Township. In other words, the current Durbin Elementary will be repurposed to special programming. And so I think as it opens, it will serve most of Wayne Township students.
But nominally, most of them won't be coming from north of 146th Street.
Well, I think almost all of them will be coming north of 146th Street. So I don't want to bore you with, let me give you just a brief history. So Southeastern opened Southeastern Elementary at Cynthia Road and 126th Street a year ago. They, when they redistricted for that school, they planned for it to open with 80% capacity. It opened at 105% capacity. So it has, currently has portable classrooms around it. The history in Hamilton Southeastern is when you build a school, the housing comes that's not already there. So we anticipate that eventually Durbin will reopen as an elementary school. But the cost of, the original plan was to renovate Durbin. The cost of bringing sewers to Durbin was prohibitive. So that's why we're building, found this site and are hoping to build this school.
Questions, comments? We are both introduced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to proposed new developments. Number one, counsel to consider an introductory information for a proposed project at the former supermarket site west of River Road and north of Westfield Road. Ms. Reed.
I was going to say, I knew your agenda says Mr. Harden, but it's me instead. No, I'm actually just going to use, thank you, Jamie, I appreciate it. Sorry about that. You get me instead of Mr. Harden, but we do have Sam Swafford and Jim Thomas in the audience to help through this process here. So I'm going to get started by saying thank you and good evening. This item before you is a project agreement and zoning amendment for $48 million worth of investment for Nexus of Noblesville. It's the culmination of a collaborative effort between Citiescape LLC and the city of Noblesville. This project is the success of multiple partners internally and externally. And I'm extremely proud to have had input and support for this project from economic development, planning, and engineering. As you will probably recall, this site has sat empty for about three years now. And we've seen a few different proposed uses for this site. I know that we're all going to agree that it was a good decision to go back to the drawing board. So just quick little refresher on that before we get into the details. Nexus will provide an employment base for Noblesville with a significant economic impact of dollars spent here locally. We've estimated that the additional local consumption of goods and services will be about $5.7 million annually. Now I can't see my thing here. Sorry about that. To look at the employment base from a workforce perspective, average jobs, average jobs over the next two years of construction period would be equivalent to about 75 full-time jobs. But at peak construction could be anywhere close to 200. In addition, the revitalization of the site as the western anchor will infuse new residents downtown within walking distance to many restaurants, shops, and our suburban urban parks, as we like to call them, that will help cultivate that enhanced nighttime economy downtown. Essentially, we're building in the market demand to help sustain downtown as the heart of Noblesville well into the future for all generations. I'm going to let, I think I'm going to keep looking back to see if Mr. Harden showed up. I'm going to let Mr. Swafford here jump in on the zoning details and project layout. And then I will summarize the project agreement and vision to kind of wrap up. Sorry, we're going to do a little switcheroo for a second.
That's fine. Swafford, please state your name and where you live.
For record, my name's Sam Swafford, 600 East 96th Street. I'm an associate of the law firm of Figury Drinker. Happy to be here tonight representing Citiescape Residential. Here tonight with Citiescape is Jim Thomas. As Sarah mentioned, this has been a collaborative project from the get-go and for the past couple of months between Citiescape and the city with respect to the zoning. Citiescape has worked with the city regarding all aspects of it, all from the architectural renderings, which you'll see, the concept plan, the development plan, and as well as the specific development standards within the PUD ordinance. That's before we deny it as an introduction. With respect to the zoning, the project will consist of a multifamily component as well as an office component. If you see on this screen here, here's the concept plan. The multifamily component will be about the eight acres on the southern portion, kind of outlined here. And then the office component will be the northern two acres up at the top here. Specifically, the multifamily will be 287 luxury apartments, luxury units, that is, with a variety of amenities. Anything from pet amenities to workout facilities to work, like workspace to cohabitate in that sense as well. So, and then specifically with the office building, it'll be approximately a 30,000 square foot office. Presentation packets in tab five is just an architectural rendering of what these apartment buildings are going to look like. As you see there, just a variety of materials. And we've ran this by the city and discussed with them what's going to look good for this specific location. As Sarah mentioned, it's going to be about a $40 million investment in the community. And we think it's going to be good to reach one of the city's goals to bring residents more to the downtown area, whether that's these residents living here in the multifamily component or working there within the office component. Like I said, it's been a collaborative approach. And as far as stepping back from the timeline, tonight will be in front of you for introduction. Plan to go to the Architectural Review Board tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Plan Commission next Monday, and then hopefully be back before you next month with the zoning aspect. And I know we're also introducing the Economic Development Agreement, which is also the next aspect of this that I think Sarah's going to go into a little bit more detail with. With that, you know, myself or Jim Thomas will be happy to answer any specific questions about the zoning side of things as well as the economic impact.
Questions for Mr. Swafford or Mr. Thomas?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Sam, is the office building one story or two? I'm guessing, I don't remember.
I think it's going to be three potentially.
Three?
On the office building while you're there, is there, is there any plan or potential adjustment that that could be commercial on the, on the first floor rather than office and potential?
I'd have to go back to the, because we're keeping it the same zoning district under the plan business. I'd have to go back and look at the permitted uses there.
Yelton seems to have an answer. Maybe not.
Yeah, office only, sorry.
Office only, okay.
At this point.
At this point. Any other questions on this portion of it? No? Okay. Ms. Reed.
Okay. Sorry about that. Mr. Hampton, I'm going to, if you want to introduce the next one, I was just thinking about the procedure. Yeah, if you want to introduce the next one, that'd be great.
I will do that. Miscellaneous, number one, counsel to consider resolution number RC-36-20, a resolution for the Citiescape Nexus Project.
Thank you. So you've heard sort of the big project, big picture concept, how it's going to work in downtown. But just to go over the project agreement structure here in details, some of you have heard this already. So just a quick summary here. Nexus is planning to be, this is a developer-backed bond structure. In this agreement, we're pledging TIF revenue for up to 25 years or until the bonds paid off, whichever happens first. In the packet, you'll see an agreement for the, the square footage of Class A office space that's outside of this project as Mr. Swafford discussed. However, Citiescape was actually able to work with JL Capital One LLC to get a commitment for construction of that by the year of 2025, by the end of 2025. This also gives the city an option to purchase the real estate if, if that construction doesn't happen. So we get an option on that. And to really, that's the public-private partnership, I think, that they've kind of went above and beyond Citiescape themselves, talking to the company that actually owns the land that they purchased this for. Citiescape will also be giving us a payment in addition to taxes of $15,000 a year after the fifth year. So for 20 years, $15,000 a year. And they'll be paying all of our impact fees minus the credits that are included in your packet. You saw those preliminary estimates. They stay preliminary until a building, building plans are finalized. So right now, those are preliminary, but engineering does a really good job of estimates, as you all know. Per our comprehensive master plan and the previous, previous housing analysis, 10% of those units will be at 80% AMI. That's also in this agreement. Another important element to highlight is that, well, sorry, I'm going to jump right in here. One last important element to highlight is the downtown vision map that identifies projects and investments that have occurred or are planned since Levinson. And so if you all turn to, I'll try to put it on your screen here. We know and we have heard you with respect to the importance of pedestrian connectivity. As a planner by trade, that's just something that's ingrained in my brain. But we've brought engineering and economic development, planning all together to collaborate on this effort. So that pedestrian network that we have in downtown is vital to the success of this. This project, Nexus, and all of the projects that have become before you this year, and even all the projects that are coming before you in the future. On the map provided to each of you, you'll see project by location with number of units, commercial space, office space, dollars of investment, and some rendering pictures, which should be pretty familiar to all of you. Each of these mixed-use projects offer different amenities and appeal to different markets. So they don't compete with one another. I think you'll notice that this is a little bit different than other communities because we do have that housing diversity and variety. Our administration appreciates these projects for their diverse options and unique styles that offer something for everyone. These will all be connected with our downtown improvements and future Logan Street Trail concepts that will begin to take form with the Village at Federal Hill and will continue west along Logan Street to Nexus, carrying out our downtown district aesthetics even further west of the river. As you'll all see, we've included projects from engineering that will also play an important role in pedestrian connectivity, including programmed roundabouts, road signal improvements, potential future roundabouts for some project-specific traffic studies recently recommended. So what you see in red, those are the outcome of our studies that were done for Federal Hill Commons. And anyone on the Downtown District Committee knows that we have and will have and continue to have for the next year or two quite a, quite a bit of investment downtown. And this is really just summarizing that in a one pager so you all can answer questions and take that with you. So with that, I will end it. If you have any questions for me specifically on the agreement, on the vision.
Thank you for coming, this is really valuable and helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
President. Mr. O'Connor.
I think this has already been rectified, but just wanted to make sure that the, Logan, at the entrance, I'd have to go back, I don't know which slide that was. But I think you already had conversation with the developer about dedication a right-of-way for a potential roundabout. But I just wanted to make sure that we had covered that ground. And I think we have.
Yes, thank you. Engineering has been involved in this heavily with us from the very beginning and involved in reviewing some of the site plans. So we have the dedicated right-of-way through the planning process with the plats that you'll see coming through the process here shortly. But engineering's comfortable, we're comfortable with, that we got enough right-of-way for that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We do need to amend, right? We need a motion to amend this resolution.
Actually, realized through Evelyn that the, the actual resolution itself isn't amended. The project agreement is amended, so.
I need to, we're already amended.
It just covers all bases. I'm fine with that if you're fine.
Okay. So we need a motion to amend the attachment to the resolution.
Make a motion to amend the attachment to Resolution RC-36-20 as presented.
Second.
This is a hand vote to amend the attachment to the resolution. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
President, I make a motion to approve Resolution RC-36-20 as amended.
This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to miscellaneous number two, council to consider Resolution number RC-37-20, a resolution regarding the 2021 High-Assessed Value Levy Growth Appeal. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, again, for the record, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller, and I referenced this item briefly in my earlier comments, and essentially what this resolution is, is an authorization for me to request to the DLGF that the city seek a excess levy appeal for high levy growth. Basically, what this is doing is, under state law, there is a maximum levy limit that, that we have, and that was referenced also in the earlier presentation. And this appeal is asking the state to approve us to increase that levy limit at a rate that's outside the normal levy growth approved limit that is established in state law, and it's due to the fact that we are a fast-growing community, so that's why it's the high levy growth, excess levy appeal. In essence, basically what this is doing is it's allowing the levy to basically grow at the rate our community is growing, and if you don't, when you're in a fast-growing community, if you don't seek these types of appeals, you're basically saying that you're forfeiting some of that growth in the community tax base, and so that's the reason that it's been established in state law for that purpose. And we did the exact same thing last year, so.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding on this?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I make a motion, we approve, or miscellaneous number two, Resolution RC-37-20 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution RC-37-20. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And transfer number one, council to consider transfer number TA-19-20, an appropriation transfer into the Downtown Development Fund for consulting services. Ms. Maris.
Council members, Ms. Maris, the OFA staff, this is another fairly straightforward appropriation transfer. This one's $100,000 going from non-departmental to O26 Street Department Improvement and Rehabilitation for some streetscape scoping work downtown. There was a request to have Kayla say a few words about the scope of the work, so I'm going to defer to her.
Thanks, Sam. Good evening, council. Just wanted to let you know that with this DLZ contract and appropriation, we're just moving forward with the Streetscape Master Plan that was implemented, I believe, in 2018. That plan, as a refresher, was a collaborative, collaborative effort with the City Chamber, Downtown Merchants, and other stakeholders. The main features of the project will facilitate more outdoor dining opportunities, outdoor seating, and shopping display capacity, along with infrastructure upgrades that engineering will be completing as well. We'll continue engaging with the Downtown District Committee, Downtown Merchants, and stakeholders as we move forward with those design concepts, timelines, plans, everything that will come out of that, and we expect to have more detailed announcements and detailed plans towards the end of the year or early 2020, based on the timeline that we receive from DLZ. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions or comments? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, as a member of the Downtown District Committee for many years, it's exciting to see that the Downtown Streetscape plan that was put together with some concepts and ideas, we're now taking those and putting them into implementation and trying to move that, this whole project forward to continue to enhance our downtown. And the idea is really to get this plan that probably will come shortly after the first of the year, but continuing to work with our, our local merchants, the Chamber, and other interested parties in the enhancements to our beautiful downtown.
It'll be exciting.
Just one question. I remember we saw sort of a design a couple of years ago, and there was, what we're saying here tonight is that's not final, we're still learning.
Correct, yes. So, DLZ will present us with a few concepts, we'll take a look at those, and then decide what we want to take to 30% drawings, and then based, once we have those 30% drawings, we'll have some stakeholder engagement of what that will look like, just to make sure we didn't miss the mark on anything and that, you know, it's what the Streetscape is wanting to accomplish.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would move to approve transfer TA-19-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve transfer 19, or TA-19-20. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Transfer is approved. We have reached council comments. Is there anyone with any comments tonight here on council? Mr. O'Connor, I think you had something.
Well, I wanted to commend the mayor, and Ivy Tech made a big announcement, and Mr. Mayor, you may want to speak about that just for a second, so the public might be aware.
I told you.
Mr. Mayor.
If I may, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. O'Connor, for reminding me of that. I was honored to join our friends at the County Commissioners, as well as our state legislators, as well as Ivy Tech President Sue Elsman this afternoon at the Noblesville campus of Ivy Tech. You may recall that several years ago, the city of Noblesville contributed $6.5 million towards the creation of the Ivy Tech campus at what was once Noblesville High School and Noblesville Middle School as well. Up until next year, that campus is a branch of the downtown campus of Ivy Tech, but effective July 1st, 2021, it will become its own standalone campus of Ivy Tech with its own chancellor and own leadership. That sounds like a minor technical change, it's actually a major technical change, a major structural change there. It'll allow for a lot, additional programming within the university there. I think one of the struggles we've had is aligning our different career pathways and certification programs that we have seen on the ground here in Noblesville that we need with Ivy Tech Vision. And I think our, having a Hamilton County branch, an actual Hamilton County campus with its own leadership will give us those programmings, that programming necessary to move this forward. I did make a comment that the, the new branding will be the Hamilton County Campus of Ivy Tech. I did give a little bit of pushback on that, but I said I certainly understood the reasoning behind that and reminded them that they are in the city of Noblesville every single day. So, an incredible investment on Ivy Tech's part, an acknowledgement of our future of higher education and learning here in Hamilton County, and just again, honor that it's in our back door, and we look forward to continue to work with them to move that project forward. So, that'll be effective, and the best part, it doesn't cost us a thing, which is always great. Although there was a caveat from Dr. Elsman that they may come back someday and ask for something, but as of right now, there's no ask moving forward, so very excited to have that announcement today in Noblesville. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. O'Connor. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
We are.